Let's call the City of Marine City Commission Meeting to order Marine City Fire Hall, Thursday, March 7th, 7:00 p.m. Could we please have a moment of silence for our dearly departed? And let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vanden Bosch.
Here.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Flossom.
Here.
Commissioner Merchant.
Here.
Commissioner Burkeman is absent. City Manager Levin.
Here.
Also present is Robert Davis, City Attorney.
I'll make a motion to dismiss Sheriff Burkeman.
Support.
Motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Moving on to communications, we just have one for a motion to receive and file a letter from DPW.
Communication from DPW, Superintendent Mike Edrich.
Support.
Any questions on it?
Can we read it?
You read that for us, please. Thank you.
With the recent ice jams and flooding we experienced over the last couple of weeks, there has been some damage done at the beach. There are broken pilings in the river as well as severe erosion at the north end of the beach. These issues will need to be taken care of before the beach can open this year for safety reasons. The estimated price to repair the pilings and replace the sand is $8,000. Parks and Rec millage funds left over from the paving project at the beach could be used to pay for this. The bids came in lower than expected. I would like to have this done as soon as possible. If you have any questions, please contact me.
Thank you. So, is she putting in a formal request for this? Does she have?
Not at this point.
He wants to get it done?
Not at this point.
At this point?
And if we have to, this could be covered under emergency.
Okay. Any other questions for it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in attendance says welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and address. Please limit your comments to five minutes. This is the time for you to raise any issues. The Commission will not respond, but the issues will be followed up upon as necessary. Anyone like to address the Commission? Hearing none, moving on to approval of the agenda. Need to have a motion to approve as amended.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Any questions, concerns, deletions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Moving on to approval of the City Commission Regular Meeting, February 21st, 2019.
Motion to approve the minutes of the Commission Meeting of February 21st, 2019.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions, concerns, additions, deletions to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. We have no consent agenda today, so we're moving on to the unfinished business, which is, first one's ordinance number 2019-04, prohibition of marijuana establishment. Then it'll be the second reading and adoption.
Still moved.
Support.
Questions or concerns on it? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossom.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Mayor Vanden Bosch.
Yes.
All ayes, motion carried.
All right, moving on to board vacancies. This is an announcement, we're actually, with the passing of one of our, one of our members, we've, we have a vacancy in Historical Commission, one in Tifa, plus we also have one in Dangerous Buildings. It's a vacancy for a building contractor. If we could get some applications into, Chris, yes?
There's also one additional one that we missed on this, is Library Board.
And also one for the Library Board. So, if we could please get some applications into the city clerk by March 25th. Thank you. Moving on to new business, AT&amp;T Small Cell Location Contract.
We have representatives here from AT&amp;T. If you have any questions regarding this contract, what they're proposing is adding small cell antennas for AT&amp;T Cellular Service in the Water Street area, four locations. I did provide some map information about where those locations are. A couple of them are still kind of being moved around, but you have the general vicinity of where they will be, pretty much each block down Water Street, down to Holy Cross. There is a provision in there that if we do approve this license, we will get a one-time, $5,000 payment from AT&amp;T. And also, there is a payment for the use of the poles, dependent upon who the owner of the poles is. At this point, most of them will be ours, so those payments will be going to us.
Yes.
I guess I'm gonna request again, in the future, can we get a cover letter with something like this so that there's more of an explanation instead of just getting a big, big formal contract? It would've been nice to get a lot of this information ahead of time. I'm sure that a letter had come in beforehand. Couple of things I noticed.
Can I get a motion to either approve or not approve, but, so we can discuss it?
I'll make a motion, we approve the AT&amp;T license agreement for the wireless installations on public structures.
Support.
Okay, motion in support. Now we can do a discussion. I'm learning.
All right. I see a lot of things on insurance and all that kind of things. Page six.
You've had a chance to look at it, Mr. Davis?
Yes, I have.
Anything in it you see that we might need?
Yeah.
Corrections or good contract?
Yeah, it's, I think it's been tried and tested with AT&amp;T and other situations. I didn't see anything unusual unless you guys have a peculiarity you want to point out.
Good evening. My name is Steve Wells. I am outside counsel for AT&amp;T Mobility. I am pleased to be here tonight. I will make it short. Basically, we did go through the contract, we went through the contract in detail. That's why it took a little bit longer than we had hoped. I will say this is, come next week, this, this state law will become effective, and that is the small cell law. And you're actually the last one to get in before the law is taken into effect. And you're also the first in this county. But we do have a license agreement. The license agreement is our standard agreement. We did make some changes as requested, but this is, this is standard, this is as far as we will go. And then also, I would just like to say that it was, it was a pleasure dealing with staff, and I think we've worked a good agreement out. And there will be three to four antennas, which are the size of your laptops, going up in selected locations that we work out with the city.
How soon do you expect, if we approve this, how soon would you expect to start? Any idea?
Towards the, towards the end of the year. We'll have to go through.
Stand up.
So, once we've gotten our name. Hi, I'm Jeff Painter from AT&amp;T. Once we have an agreement in place and we're moving forward and we start the permitting process and we hash out all the pole types, the, you know, the aesthetics of what these things will look like, where they're, where exactly they're going, we'll go through the permitting process. It's likely it'll be fourth quarter. If we can get there quicker, we're definitely gonna try to. We have some compliance, internal compliance for RF emissions, things like that, that we have to go through on our side. But generally, we should fly right through this. We've kind of vetted these locations pretty far. We're already, we're already in contact with, with power and fiber backbone from AT&amp;T Wireline. So, it should, we, we plan on building all four this year. We've got that one at the church that we're, we're struggling to find a home for, or down by the church. There's not a whole lot of right-of-way there because of the parking lot.
Yeah.
So, at a minimum, three. Hopefully, we can pull off that fourth one without having to go into a private agreement with the Catholic Church, so.
Now, some of them are pole placement for, we use now for Christmas lights and banners, et cetera. Are you gonna be replacing the poles and putting new poles in, or?
Yes. So, we'll, we'll work out a pole selection. We've got, we've got a library of poles, something that maybe the city wants to go to in the future. We can work on painting the opposite side pole if it makes sense, or if there's something we need to work out, we'll hash that all out during the permitting process. We're pretty, pretty open on the, on the front side, working with, working with the locations. I think one of them, we're stuck at Water Street and Broadway. There's a, there's a street light there, so.
Anyone else have any more questions for him?
Once the law changes, I think it would become impossible to have the $5,000 one-time fee.
That's correct, Mr. Davis.
Just an observation. And I think it changes on the 18th?
Yes.
12th.
The 12th, it's enacted on the 12th, yes.
12th.
Okay.
That said, you know, we've, we've negotiated in good faith. We've been, we've been in touch with, with Ms. Levin for a year, so we've.
What's some of the rationale for getting it here tonight?
Was there, is there, will that improve cell service for the non-AT&amp;T carriers at all? Will that, or is that just?
No, it'll be, it'll, yeah. Yeah, it'll mainly, unless it's a, an off-brand that maybe has a roaming agreement with us.
Okay.
So, if you're with Cricket Wireless, or, or there's some other carriers out there that probably have agreements, I don't know which ones.
Because it is a dead zone up there.
This is also to deal with the Cantel problem, too, so.
It should improve drastically throughout. We ate dinner down there and we're having trouble inside the restaurant, so we feel your pain.
Well, we also use it in the fire service, the cell phones are backup to the paging system and the radio system.
Right.
So, if you have anything along the water, it's, it sometimes works.
It's difficult with the border agreements with, with Canada is where we, we get into a lot of trouble.
Yep.
We know that.
Now, this isn't gonna cause us any more interference than what we currently have.
No, these are the, these are the same frequencies that we use, so the tower that's not too far from here, it'd be the same frequencies. The, the distance on them is, is maybe 400 feet radius or so for each node. As of right now, it's four. I, I don't know what the future holds there. I'm sure that there will be additionals to come. There's also 5G in the future. That'll, that'll be an additional radio. I don't know, you know, how far out that is, though. It just, economics, I'm sure we're going to be sitting like, like all the other carriers at first.
Now, with them coming in first, and then these poles, is that the only person that then can be on that pole? The only company, or no, or? Because they'll probably, you, since you're the first, there'll be others then coming?
Yeah, the, it'll depend on the design. So typically, chances are no. It'll be, it'll probably just be us.
Okay.
Theoretically, you could, a carrier could come in and ask to change out the pole, go to maybe a higher antenna, and then put us back on where we are. It would change the look of the pole. It could be done, but I don't know if a lot of carriers are gonna want to do that. I think it's just a lot of equipment and everything on the poles, more than anything else.
So, you don't co-op with anybody else?
At least on these. We do co-locate on, on all the towers, so, so you'll see many levels of cell, cell lines for towers. That's why I say theoretically, based on radio frequencies, we could, but I don't know, I think it's just because we're talking about a 25-foot span and everybody kind of wants to be at the same height for these.
Okay. Just don't want it to look like a porcupine downtown.
Yeah.
And put poles in everywhere. Any other questions for him? Got a motion on the floor to approve? There's no more questions?
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossom.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Mayor Vanden Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
All ayes, motion carried.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Coming up. Next, we're gonna move on to appoint the Commission Representative for May 7th Special Election. Usually Lisa handles this for us. Would you be willing to do it again?
Yeah, I can do it for this election.
I'd like to nominate Lisa for it. Anybody has any questions? Or support first?
Support.
Anybody else would like to do it?
This is probably the easiest one you can ever have.
Chris was hoping that Lisa would do it again because she's done it every year for.
Yeah, these are five-minute meetings, they're so nice.
Lisa will trade you for some cub.
Oh, no.
Any, if there's no more questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Moving on to Resolution 004-2019, Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act.
I'll make a motion that we, is this a first or second or anything, you know?
Well, this, this in essence is the resolution that we're boxed into doing by the state on an annual basis. So, if we don't do this and don't prescribe to the cap for our insurance, we will get penalized from the state through our revenue sharing. On the flip side of this, if we don't do this, then we have to renegotiate our union contracts, and then more than likely, we'd be going to mediation. It's an unfortunate thing that we have to do on an annual basis.
So, is this a first reading or a second reading? Because I can't remember.
No, it's just a resolution.
It's a resolution, all right. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 004-219, a resolution of exemption from the requirements of the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions on it?
Is the date correct on here? It says March 2018. Is that supposed to be 2018?
It should be 2019.
Okay.
All in favor?
No. No, I mean.
Roll call. Roll call vote, please.
Absolutely not.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossom.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Mayor Vanden Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
All ayes, motion carried.
Moving on to financial business, disbursements including payroll and bond payment of $1,269,754.15. Can I get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the total disbursements, including payroll and bond payment, for $1,269,754.15.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on Lisa?
I see that we're paying the bill for Tetra Tech for the municipal survey and boundary analysis, but we haven't seen it.
I'll have an update during my manager's report for you.
All right.
Is this, are we, is this the final payment on a bond, or is this the?
I don't think it's final.
Not final?
It says final on the one.
Is it?
Is it?
For the water tower, I thought it said.
I think it did.
What page is it? It says right on there.
Does it?
It should, yeah. I thought I saw a final payment.
So, you know, we had a couple that were getting ready to pay off.
Yep.
That's a good thing.
Final payment, right here, in the storage tank.
Yeah, I saw that somewhere.
Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Flossom.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Mayor Vanden Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
All ayes, motion carried.
All right, moving on to dispersment of surplus Tifa funds. Need a motion to accept and file.
Make a motion to accept and file. Yes, submitted.
Second.
Questions about this?
I just, I'd just like to point out, these are the final tallies of what we're paying out and who gets what left over from the Tifa's. It's all in here. Somebody would like to see it.
And it will dispel a lot of the rumors of what we actually did or did not give up. It's actually firm numbers, so. And the city will recoup $137,859, or $95. $3,000 will go, $3,832 will go back to Drug Task Force. Senior citizens will get $6,553. Library, $57.33. The parks, $4,056. The county operating millage will be $43,000. And the college will get $100, or $15,498.
That's only one Tifa, though.
Oh, that is two. I thought that was the.
These are the totals here.
I think you want to read the.
You want to read these right here.
I thought that was.
Your numbers were small.
Yeah.
The first, very first page. Got one more in there.
All right. We had a fund balance of $786,739. The city will be keeping $499,314. Drug Task Force will then receive $13,876. Seniors will get $23,728. Libraries, $20,761. Parks, $14,689. County operating be $158,250. The count, and the community college will get $56,119.
County approved all the figures.
Good. All right. Motion support. Any other questions on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. City manager's report.
I attended the following since my last update, Strategic Planning, ZBAA Tifa Subcommittee, and the SEMCOG Road Funding Seminar. Also attended the Blue Meets Green Retreat last week and presented on the Redevelopment Ready Communities Process. I have been meeting with department heads on their capital improvement plans, working on those, and will be working on preparing the budgets for you as well, hoping to try and get a little information ahead to you before we get those actual budgets to you. I met with Tetra Tech. We did go over some preliminary responses for all of those properties that were in question about ownership. There were some questions that I had, so they're going back to address those, and hopefully soon, we should get our final response to those five properties that we had in question. I think the bill that was on there was for probably most of the work, but I think we'll still have a final bill when all is said and done. Tomorrow, I'll be meeting with the attorney regarding the property owner issue. And we're still working on delving into the fireworks ordinance. From what we originally looked at online, it looks like all of those new dates were part of the proposed House and Senate bill, but did not make it as part of the approved and signed bill package. I saw some conflicting news from Algonac on their Facebook page today, so we're gonna kind of regroup and make sure that we have the right understanding of that before we potentially bring it back.
Any questions for the city manager?
The rec information that we had at the last meeting, was that posted? We were gonna post, or what are you, what are we doing with it? Because I've already gotten some feedback, but I just want to make sure that we're getting that out there so that.
I, I have been in contact with April, and we're gonna be working on some more information to put out, whether it be a Survey Monkey or something. So, we're, we're working on that.
Anybody else have any questions for the city manager? If not, we're gonna move on to Commissioner Privilege. Mr. Merchant, you want to start us out tonight?
Sure. Just real quick, I just want to mention that the Michigan Small Business Development Center, SBDC, is gonna be holding classes at the Washington Life Center. They're gonna be doing things to help start small businesses, write business plans, marketing, things of that nature. So, the events will be held coming, I believe, on Thursday evenings, maybe starting in the next couple of months. So, if you have an entrepreneur spirit, it might be good to attend these classes and become part of a business here in Marine City.
Mr. Flossom?
I hope everybody got enough of their punch keys, because Fat Tuesday was here and gone. Have to wait another year.
Yeah, since I, I wasn't at the last meeting, so I want to take this, this opportunity to thank DPW Superintendent Mike Edrich, Mayor Vanden Bosch, the DPW crew, and the friends of City Hall who actually led the new commissioners on a facilities tour on February 9th. I, I have to say that we were, we were thoroughly impressed by everything that's going on here. I mean, you know, you see these buildings, you see our treatment plant, you see the water plant out on, on Water Street, and the little one out there on Bell River, and you just see these little buildings and you don't really, you have no idea what's in them. And they, our DPW, they run, Superintendent Edrich runs a tight ship, so he does, he does a nice job for us, and I, and I, we were, we were very impressed. Of course, our fire, our, you know, our fire department and all that, and Mayor Vanden Bosch took us through there, and that was nice, that was kind of fun, so. So, thank you for that. It was a, it was a nice experience. I also want to mention that, and I'm not sure if we still have any tickets left or not, I think as, as of this morning, we had a few left, but the Chamber of Commerce and the Washington Life Center are hosting our third annual llama races out at the Event Center here on Saturday. It's always a good time. If you don't have your ticket yet and you have an interest, you might want to try to go down to the Chamber office tomorrow and see if we have any tickets left. But yeah, so come on out and join us if you can. And other than that, just, I want to have a good evening, safe weekend.
I know a lot of people in the community know Jim Downey. He's, he was our attorney here before Mr. Davis. He sent me some information, and I wanted to share that with everybody, that his son, Jimmy Downey, is now an eighth grade student at Marine City Holy Cross School, and he was again named a state semifinalist in the National Geographic Geography B, a nationwide competition open to fourth and eighth graders. 100 state Michigan, state of Michigan students have been invited to Western Michigan University on March 29th to compete for a spot at the national competition in Washington, D.C. in May, and he's one of them. This will be the fourth level of competition for him. To qualify as a semifinalist, he won his classroom competition and later the school B. As the Holy Cross School winner, he sat for a written test with all the other school winners across the state to pair the list to 100 semifinalists. We learned that he made the list, and he's the only student St. Clair County so honored. So, we want to wish him the best of luck in the competition. The whole community is very proud of his accomplishment. His family, friends, and community are all rooting for him, and we'll have more updates to follow to see how he does.
Nothing for me.
I've got a couple announcements. Came to my attention this week that Supervisor Linda Swyoffer from China Township's son passed away this week, so if people see Linda, please give her, you know, our best, and it's, it's hard to lose your, lose one of your own children, so it's not natural to bury your own, so. She's gonna have a very, very tough time with it, so. Also, would like to give, console the.
Also, would like to give, console the family of the gentleman that passed away at the end of Catholic Point this week. It was a, it was a tough call, very cold weather. We had great cooperation with the police department, the dive team, the sheriff's department helped us with the drone doing, accident reconstruction, Bayards tolling for getting the vehicle out of the water for us, and it was, it was brutal for the guys in, in the, in the water. It was just extremely cold, and it was a current issue in that section of the river because of where it meets with Bell River, so I just want to thank everybody that was involved, and Jim and I did a unified command, which it worked out real well. He handled the press, and I stayed away from them. So, I was good with that. I was bundled up, and he was in dress pants, so. I like the fire suit when it's cold out. It's not as nice when it's hot out, but. And just, when you see the guys out in the cold, we want to thank the couple, we've got some food dropped off for us and coffee from the, some of the local restaurants, and we appreciate it. Thank you very much. Yeah, hopefully, we have a good turnout at the llama races. I know it's sold out. It's usually a good time. I never thought I'd be rooting for a wooden, a wooden cut out of a llama and fuzzy dice thrown up against the wall, but it is Marine City, so hopefully, we all enjoy. With that, I'd like to, the, the City Commission would like to enter into a closed session to review legal opinion regarding the consideration of purchase of real or leased real property per MCL 15-268D. There may or may not be action taken after, when we return to open session. I need a motion to enter in closed session.
So, move?
Support. Roll call on this? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Mayor Vanden Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossom.
Yes.
All A's, motion carried.